Morning and welcome to the Hawaii State Senate Committee on Commerce and Consumer Protection. This is our Friday, April 11th, 2025. Nine thirty, the first of three nine thirty AM agendas in conference room two two nine at the Hawaii State Capitol. The subsequent two agendas are on governors nominees to boards and commissions. We took testimony on those nominations in previous hearings and will be making decision making on those nominees at the conclusion of this first agenda. First up is Governor's Message five five five, Michael Nonaka for consideration and confirmation to the Board of Directors of the Hawaii Hurricane Relief Fund for a term to expire June thirty, twenty twenty eight. Well, I guess I should read before we proceed, this this meeting is being streamed live on YouTube. And in the unlikely event that we need to abruptly end this hearing, we will try to reconvene as quickly as possible. We go into conference committee next week and it gets a little more cumbersome to reschedule. This is a ninety minute hearing time slot, so we hope to be concluded with this business and the other two subsequent agendas prior to eleven AM. We do observe a two minute testimony time limit in this committee and we would encourage you to stand on your testimony. If you intend to read it verbatim, we've, the committee has been apprised of your written testimony and I've reviewed it. If you're online, please stand by, your audio will be muted and video disabled until it's your turn to testify. Okay, let's begin, DCCA Insurance Division in support. Yeah, Hawaii Insurers Council in support. Thank you very much. We also have testimony from Stephen Chow. And in support and support from the Hawaii Hurricane Relief Fund. Is there anyone else who would like to testify on this measure? This nominee, okay, I'm told the nominee is traveling, he was available. And presented in the briefing that the Joint Committees on Consumer Protection in the House and Senate held last week. Next nominee is Governor's Message five nine three. Marie White, white, did I get that right? To also to the Hawaii Hurricane Relief Fund Board of Directors for a term to expire June thirty, twenty twenty eight. Again, we have the DCCA Insurance Division in support. Hawaii Insurers Council. Thank you. Stephen Chow, Aaron Ling Johansson, and the Hawaii Hurricane Relief Fund also in support. Is there anyone else who would like to testify on this nomination? Okay, any questions? We'll save it for the chair. Okay, next is, we'll move on, Governor's Message five nine four, Reina Miyamoto. Also to the Hawaii Hurricane Relief Fund Board of Directors, term to expire June thirty, twenty twenty eight. We have DCCA Insurance Division in support, we have the Mortgage Bankers of Hawaii in support. Gentry Homes in support, Daisy Chung, Cheryl Ann Ishida Tanaka in support. Rochelle Lee Gregson in support, Deborah Lunning in support. Miley Kanemaru in the Hawaii Hurricane Relief Fund. Is there anyone else who would like to testify on Governor's Message five nine four? Okay, if not, I think we have the nominee online, Ms. Miyamoto. If you'd like to make a statement and address the committee, go ahead and unmute and feel free to do so. Good morning.
Good morning. Thank you so much for this opportunity, you know, on the hurricane insurance issues, particularly for condos is a significant issue for, you know, a lot of homeowners and prospective home buyers, so I appreciate the opportunity to be considered to serve on the Hurricane Relief Fund Board. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, members, any questions for the nominees? Okay, looks like there are none. Thank you for making yourself available this morning and for stepping forward to serve. Next, we have Governor's Message five nine five, Leslie Dorr. Also to the Board of Directors of the Hawaii Hurricane Relief Fund for a term to expire June thirty, twenty twenty eight. Hawaii Insurers Council in support. Thank you. We also have written testimony from the DCCA Insurance Division in support. Timothy Johns of Zephyr Insurance Company in support, Martha Nubrega, Rick Dietrich in support. John Maurer in support, Edward Gabriel Keo Nui in support. The Hawaii Hurricane Relief Fund in support and the Hawaii Independent Insurance Agents Association in support. Is there anyone else who would like to testify? Okay, seeing none, Mr. Dorr. Thank you, members, any questions for the nominee? Okay. Next, we will move on to Governor's Message five nine seven, Edward Hike for consideration to the Board of Directors of the Hawaii Hurricane Relief Fund, term to expire June thirty, twenty twenty eight. We have the DCCA Insurance Division in support and the Hawaii Hurricane Relief Fund in support. Is there anyone else who would like to testify? Seeing none, Mr. Hike.
President, thank you. Nice to be here. Welcome the opportunity to be of service.
Thank you very much. Members, any questions for the nominee? I do if you can join us. Thank you for stepping forward to serve and taking on the role as the Chair of the Board. I'm not sure if you were following along, but but I'm sure you've been apprised of the presentation and the questions that the Joint Committee is asked in relation to the Hurricane Fund presentation last week. And I guess I, we did send some follow ups. I'm actually not, I didn't check before we got into the briefing as to whether we received responses yet.
Those will be submitted likely one o'clock today. We're gonna take a final review of the responses, but wanted it well circulated and communicated, so I think, I believe the deadline was two o'clock, so.
Could you maybe summarize the the responses that you intend to submit to the committees?
The, yes, I'll summarize it by saying the objective is to reach the greatest common denominator of potential insurers to help balancing all the issues and accessing the reinsurance market, which is where the largest logjam, in our view, exists in terms of trying to bring more competitive pricing and more support to competitors in the marketplace.
Thank you for that. It does seem like a good part of that conversation that we had last week centered around the need for the Hurricane Fund to have as much money and as much flexibility as possible to try and attract reinsurers and partners to help expand out capacity. And you know, on the other side, just a general concern by members of the legislature that there ultimately is a limited amount of funds that the Hurricane Fund will be able to deploy with or without additional support. And the desire to ensure to the, you know, best amount possible that that money be deployed to provide coverage for residents, especially the residents that are having the hardest time dealing with the premium increases. So can you provide us any updates in the discussions that the board may have had or that you may have had with the consultant around the feedback, you know, related to that discussion in the briefing last week?
Yeah, very well received. The objective is to work with whatever parameters we have, whatever capital is committed to trying to relieve pressure and to create the widest audience to potentially insure. So I think that message was well received and we're, we're trying to target a range that will allow as many people as possible, given the capital committed to access via HHRF hurricane insurance, if need be.
So one of the, well, maybe I'll stop here and see if members have any. So one of the, one of the items that came up in prior conversations that was not put forward by the board or Aon in the presentation last week was around putting in particular conditions on eligibility. I know there was some hesitancy by the board and the consultant around making the rules too cumbersome, the eligibility rules too cumbersome. And how that might delay the process of rolling out the product. But one of the, I felt like one of the clearer, easier to understand potential eligibility criteria for the larger buildings is an owner occupancy requirement. We have had discussions about that and I was expecting that that might come up in the conversation last weekend, it didn't. And I think that's part of why we spent so much time emphasizing the legislature's concern about money being deployed to speculative, you know, high-rise condominiums when there are a lot of people hurting in low-rise or in buildings that we know are full of residents. And so you know, where has that, that at least that specific criteria, because it's so easy to comprehend? Where is that in the conversation?
In the initial, I, I believe the consultant is advising clearly and strongly. If we're going to attract reinsurance in the initial policy phase, trying to delineate whether a policyholder is a resident or not does slow the process. So we could get to market very quickly if we are covering, say, you know, above ten million, below a hundred million and, and that will incorporate a lot of buildings, buildings less than ten million are still getting access from current admitted carriers here in the marketplace. So defining that with a range that's attractive to reinsurers is, is a good first step to be able to get a policy in place quickly and then look at further iterations to policies in the future is, is basically the message.
Sure. So there's still some hesitancy on that. You know, it seems to me like the, the initial pushback from you guys last week around a condition like that was that it's difficult to obtain demographic information about residents in different buildings. But, you know, a homeowner's exemption as a percentage of ownership of the units, right? That seems like a data set that
Certainly could be added in time. If you want that support from the reinsurance market, the first iteration likely needs to leave that clause out because it's, it's, it's more detail that won't, you know, be immediately forthcoming. So if we want to get a policy in by summer, we've got to draw them in with the, the common parameters that they're gonna look for to support the reinsurance market. I think if you get that and you start to build, right now, HHRF isn't insuring anyone, you know, if the HHRF ends up insuring a lot of people and have a good book, then you can add that layer of, you know, further layers of details to the policy and, and get more response from the marketplace. But the immediate response, you, you kind of have to approach the reinsurance market with the terms that they're accustomed to looking at for this type of reinsurance.
And potentially more diversity in the riskiness of the policyholders. So, so it does sound more like it, it does sound to me like the Hurricane Fund is more amenable to the the approach that was being put forward by the House to just lower the cap.
Yeah, I, I, I would say that's fair. We, we're not distinguishing between House and Senate. We understand the community and are just trying to
Well, the Senate convened the briefing, so is our idea by its nature. It doesn't really bother me, it's just getting an understanding of exactly what we're doing and why.
Right.
That's more important because there still is a pretty significant appropriation asked on the table by the fund.
Understood.
Right?
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, that, that does make sense and it does answer the questions. I'll, I'll stop there, members.
Yeah.
Senator Richard.
Thank you. By no means am I insurance guru on this, but we talk about the reinsurance and from my look at it, relatively speaking, it's a relatively small market for reinsurance. And our exposure would be wide. I mean theoretically, I remember Hurricane Nikki was very small impact on one island. But my concern is if we hit Oahu. The idea of insurance is everybody chips in and then you cover your losses and we still keep the company in business and everybody's kept, keeps hold. But if, I, I just, what are your thoughts on the size of our? I don't even know how to phrase it, maybe market with the likelihood of the exposure of that whole market potential or a good portion of that potential, because my concern, the reinsurers are gonna look at it, the exposure may be too much. We may do fine and then we could get hit really hard. What's your thoughts on that?
Well, I think the reinsurance market is willing to support this market. An analogy I tried to use was it's, it's all the same product, insurance is risk transfer in one way, I phrased it as imagine your favorite big box store, if you buy your favorite drink outside from the vending machine, it could be two, three dollars. If you go into your favorite big box store and buy a case of that favorite drink, it could be twenty or thirty cents per unit. If you go all the way back out where the semis are and say, hey, I need a pallet of that, maybe you could get two, three cents, you know, per item. It's the same item and so reinsurance is really in that pallet. You know, and the semi trailer end of the market. So to answer your question, I don't think there's any concerns about getting reinsurance or supporting the marketplace. It's just where are we buying it and how are we buying it? So back to your point, Senator, if you try and customize too much of the serving size, call it vis a vis that who's living in it, are they local, are they not? That's, you don't do that customization when you're negotiating for a pallet. You can do that on the single serving.
Yeah, I get what you're saying. So so then it comes back to the affordability of it. And so that, that's where the conversations.
And we, we believe it gets more affordable if we present ourselves as a, as the largest market we can be to the largest providers of that service. And that's why customization will have to come later, depending on how much uptake we, we actually provide for policies.
All right, thank you. Thanks, Chair.
Members, any other questions?
Well, it's a, just real quick, it's a loan right now that's being contemplated, the funding. So that's going to kind of really limit the options and who we can help because we got to pay it back. So you're going to have to have this mix of coverage and customers, for lack of a better word, in order to, to pay it back, right? Maybe you're referring to a potential loan from the HHRF to the HPIA? Is that what you're referring to?
So there's that and then the, the bill SB ten forty-four is contemplating an additional appropriation to the HHRF on top of the hundred seventy-one million that they have available.
Okay, that would be additional. So the more capital you have, the more risk you can take. So we can take a certain measure, the HHRF can take a certain measure of risk just based on the funds that it has. Back to your point, maybe about the scale of the market, if a big accident happens, it could be a big event and, and, and I don't believe the HHRF is gonna negotiate with reinsurers to take on more appetite than is appropriate. But if you wanted to potentially cover a wider share of the whole Hawaii market, you would need additional capital, which could potentially be a loan. It could be financing from, you know, bond issuance, it could be, you know, fees, you know, could be any other way. But that's speaking more to about how much total risk you want to take. So HHR can probably help, likely help. I, I believe it helped the first time and I, and I believe it can help the second time. It's really about just taking your institutional buying power, negotiating good rates with the institutional level providers of risk transference or insurance. And how much of that you want to do. So I think, you know, we'll tailor it to what's appropriate or what's appropriated and what we have. And, and the better capacity that we have, we know what we can negotiate with the reinsurers on.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate that.
After you get started, but in order to get started fast, you're gonna, you're gonna start with bright lines that are
We're gonna start with what we know they'll buy.
So you can go fast.
Yeah.
That's the trade off.
That's the speed. That's right. And we heard, hey, you guys got to pick up the pace and get some policies in the market. So we're balancing all, we're listening very closely, you know, rest assured, all the feedback is, is well understood and well absorbed. And we're doing our best to balance all those.
Well, and thank you for that. It's, you know, you know, it's very complicated. And so you know, if that's gonna continue to be the position of the HHRF, then I think it's important for us to have this clearly communicated to the public that the trade, the bargain here is that, you know, based off of the sort of limited information available to us now, you guys are going to start broad so you can go fast. And then, and then adjust accordingly. How long before you anticipate, you know, I mean, you're anticipating rolling out policies this summer? How long before you start to get enough data to be able to make that decision?
Oh, that renewal cycles in, in the reinsurance markets sort of revolve around beginning of the year and mid-year. So I would, I would think that, you know, by the beginning of the next year, we could have some more negotiations, depending on how many people are, how much need there is, how much demand there is and like, okay, what, what will we be looking to negotiate for in round two?
So maybe January, when we come back into session, you can come back in and give us a
Yeah, a lot of people will have policies, we'll have a lot more information with which to say, okay, here's some further options that, you know, we believe we can provide the community or responds to the issues that you're raising more, in a more focused way.
Okay. Anything else, members? Okay, cool. Thank you for taking us through that.
Yeah.
We'll move on to the next nominee, last nominee for the Hawaii Hurricane Relief Fund Board, Gwen McDonald. For a term to expire also June thirty, twenty twenty eight, Governor's Message seven eighty-two. DCCA Insurance Division in support. First Wine Bank in support. With George Leong, David Rare, Leah Nakamura in support. John Martin in support. Courtney Wagner with comments. Trevor McGinley. Alyssa Hostly, both in support. Jody Inouye. In support, Malcolm Lau. Ben Kashiwabara, Eric Yi, Daniel Yafuso, Darian DeSalem, Joel Rapaport. Keith Morota, Justin Puckett, Terry Shiroma. April Lee and the Hawaii Hurricane Relief Fund Board all submitting testimony in support. Is there anyone else who would like to testify on the nominee? Okay, if not, Ms. McDonald.
Yeah, I think you chair and I'm with the committee and I'm really appreciate that opportunity, sort of the people of the state, why and resolve some of the hurricane issues.
Thank you. Members, any questions? Okay, if not, we will move on. Thank you all for, again, stepping forward and making yourselves available today. The next nominee is Governor's Message five seventeen, Teresa Hernandez for confirmation to the Hawaii Board of Chiropractic for a term to expire June thirty, twenty twenty eight. We have Hawaii Board of Chiropractic in support. Thank you. That's all the testimony we've received. Is there anyone else who would like to testify? Okay, Ms. Hernandez. Good morning. Good morning. If you'd like to make a statement around your nomination and address the committee, please, please do so.
Yes, I just wanted to say thank you so much for taking the time to consider me for this opportunity. Chiropractic has been a big passion for me over the last seven years and I just look forward to the potential of being able to serve on the board.
Thank you for stepping forward. Members, any questions for the nominee? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on. Thank you again for making yourself available. Governor's Message seven two nine is next, Terrence Aratani to the Board of Nursing for a term to expire June thirty, twenty twenty eight. Board of Nursing in support. Thank you, Hawaii Primary Care Association in support.
I'll be very brief. My name is Aragabi. I'm speaking on behalf of the Hawaii Primary Care Association. I'm also speaking as a friend of Mr. Aratani. I've known him for over forty years. We both started as legislative, lowly legislative interns many, many years ago. And I have seen him progress into progressively more responsible positions up to the most difficult staff position at, in this building, which is Chief of Staff of the Hawaii State Senate. He, in my estimation, represents the best that the Hawaii State Legislature has to offer the people of Hawaii. He is someone who has committed his entire life to public service. And so with that, I urge your favorable consideration of this nomination, but more importantly, I ask you, I implore you to start grooming the next generation of Terrence Aratani's because Terrence Aratani and myself we're dinosaurs. We're closer to the end than we are at the beginning. But in order for government to work, we need to find the next generation of people who are willing to give their lives to doing what is best for the people. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Don Kurisu in support. Nancy Lynn Bernal in support. Mike Nguyen for Aloha Care in support. And okay, is there anyone else who would like to testify? Okay, seeing none, Mr. Aratani. Good morning.
We want you Chair, Vice Chair and my members of the committee. I just want to say that I've been serving on the Board of Nursing since August of twenty twenty-three. And we would love to continue serving in that capacity. And thank you for considering my nomination today. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer. Thank you once again.
Thank you, members. Any questions? Seeing none, thank you. Senator Awah.
Mr. Aratani, thanks for serving. I have major concerns from my constituents. And, and it goes totally against the best we have to offer comments that were just made. There are accusations that essentially Mr. Aratani tried to take money from our kupuna in the form of a grant back in twenty nineteen. I want to get your side of the story. There was application for GIA's for Ha'ula Resiliency Hub. Money was nearly awarded, but it was pulled back at the last minute because of the controversy. This is what I'm told. And, and it is very concerning. So I want to hear your side of what happened because I was told that it was supposed to go to our resiliency hub. And you pulled it out at the last minute to try to put it directly to the Ko'olau Law Health Center instead.
Okay, I'll be happy to answer.
Okay, I'll be happy to answer, Senator Awah. Uh, what happened was, um, we were partnering with, uh, uh. Uyo Ha'ula to build a resilient center. Uh, initially, I was approached, uh. By their uh, executive director to pursue a grant in aid because they felt that they wouldn't be able to. Uh, have um, ability to uh, initially get a state grant in aid. Uh, back in twenty nineteen, so we agreed to partner, we were going to be the lead on that, um, back then it wasn't a resilient center. We had a plan to do a community center, uh, several stories buildings on that property. And we were going to build our clinic on the bottom floor and share the rest of the space with the community. Uh, over time, uh, since the grant was awarded. The ED uh, wanted to convert. Uh, the property to a resilient center. Uh, she, we initially, we had an architect consultant. Who we were using and she brought in a architect from New York who was supposed to, we were informed that he was going to. Fund the entire project uh, through his foundation. Uh, when we started proceeding, he came to the site, we were uh, informed. Um, that he would be the architect, he would work with local architects. Uh, and then he started discussing his fees and contract, so at that point, I had to inform my board that. Um, the purpose of uh, us joining, uh, partnering with. Uyo Ha'ula, what changed tremendously, so the board decided to pull back on that, um, project. So that's our side of the story, thank you.
Was the money given?
No, um, the money was, the grant in aid, the grant in aid, uh, two hundred thousand, it was a state grant in aid. Um, we could not use the monies because it was specified for a particular project in Ha'ula. So the money's eventually lapsed.
A resiliency hub, right, through Uyo Ha'ula?
Um, no, it was, uh, because we were the designated uh, entity for the grant in aid. Um, there was no way to transfer that fund to Uyo Ha'ula, and I was never approached by. Uyo Ha'ula to make any type of transfer of that money.
The, a- and I appreciate your side of the story, I I am still concerned because the way it was told from the other side. Was that, you know, you made the pitch, uh, you can correct me if I'm wrong. But you made the pitch that with all of your experience and connections in here in the legislature, it'd be better that you would take the lead. And so they really felt that they were swindled, I guess you could say, for lack of better words.
I would say that is a.
Go ahead.
Um, that's pretty defamatory to say I swindled money because in it, uh, again, I said that we were partnering. With Uyo Ha'ula, and that was the intent, um, when the resilient center was changing to. Uh, instead of uh, Ko'olau Health Center having a clinic on a floor space to having a structure on the side. Uh, that changed the purpose of the entire project, and we were looking at an estimated cost for. The community center, not a resilient center now, a community center of maybe five to fifteen million. Um, for the entire community project now. Turning it into resilient center, um. You know, the executive director started talking about a plasma, um, recycling uh, center. Having a storage facilities, um, capacity to, I believe, hold two thousand four hundred. Uh, individuals in case of emergency, the project expanded tremendously beyond what we anticipated, and that's why. Um, again, you know, we pulled out.
Okay, I appreciate you giving your side, thank you.
Thank you.
Members, any other questions? Okay, seeing none, thank you, Mr. Aratani, we will move.
Thank you.
The next, uh. Governor's just a second. Okay, next nominee is Governor's Message seven thirty Cheryl Shields Hansen for consideration to the Board of Nursing. Also for a term to expire June thirty twenty twenty-eight. Uh, Board of Nursing in support. Thank you very much, Catherine Plyler and Tammy Napoleon. Uh, also in support, is there anyone else who would like to testify? Hey, I believe we have the nominee online. Good morning.
Good morning. Good morning.
To address the committee, then please go ahead.
Okay, thank you, I do, uh, Cheryl Shields Hansen, I am very excited to continue my service to the Board of Nursing. Um, I have over forty years' experience in nursing and thirty-five experience in teaching. And I am. With my advocacy for both patients and nurses and nursing students, I feel I'm an exceptional. Committee member, board member, so I, I urge you to approve my continued. Membership of the Board of Nursing, thank you so much.
Thank you very much, members, any questions?
I, I do.
Oh, Senator Awah.
Thank you. Second here, thanks for, uh, your willingness to serve. Sure, I want to know if you know of Hu- uh, Hawaii Pacific Health's Employee Give Back Campaign.
I do have, I do know about the Hawaii Pacific Health and also University of Hawaii Give Back Campaign, yes, sir.
I, I was told, you know, by a, a number of nurses that whatever unit they may be in, whoever's managing it. Puts a lot of pressure for everybody in the unit to comply with giving back part of their salaries to the company. Is what I'm hearing true?
I believe that the campaign is pretty healthy and there are a lot of signs and. Um, literature pre- presented to the employees, however, it is totally voluntary. As far as giving back to, these are both. With the University of Hawaii and also HPH, it's totally voluntary to um, give to this campaign.
I, I know, I know that it's voluntary, the, what I was asking was, um. Nurses are telling me that they feel pressured, even though it's voluntary, they feel pressured where if they say no. Whoever's managing that unit will throw in a dollar or something, just so they can say one hundred percent. Of our nurses are, are on board with the program.
I personally do not know of that type of harassment, if you call it.
That's what they feel, yes.
Yeah, it sounds like they are feeling like they're being harassed, I personally am not involved or have seen that. Um, I can absolutely. Identify that maybe managers are being, you know, um, really pressured to get their employees to donate. I think it happens, I've been in places where I've worked where United Way has been very. You know. Hardcore, if you will, um, but. I still think at the end of the day, it's voluntary and it. Might be something that they need to address specifically to their supervisor, and if that isn't helpful to go. To the next step or the next level.
Understood, thank you. As a nurse, you know, we always hear every year, um. They're out there striking for, for better wages, better, um, working environments, you've been there for thirty-five years. You've been in, um, the field for thirty-five years, it says. What's your take on the discrepancy of nurses' salaries versus CEO salaries where in, in twenty twenty, it says? HPH's CEO made two point seven million, four point four million in twenty twenty-three. Uh, there are others in other positions and Queens Health Systems made two million in twenty twenty. Do you think that's fair?
Hi Senator, um, my name is Chelsea Fupunaga, I'm one of the executive officers for the Board of Nursing, this is Alex Pang, he's the other executive officer. So, um, I don't think this is within the purview, but she would be on her, in her capacity as a board member, she wouldn't be answering these questions normally. It'd be just with the licensure aspect.
I'm asking because she's a nurse in front of us, so anybody who comes in front of us in the field, I want to know their mentality. On certain issues that are very concerning to the people that I represent.
I, I kind of just want to be respectful of what her expertise is for the board, though.
And I would like to know her mentality because I'm voting on her, I don't know why you guys both sat up here, I didn't call you guys up.
But we just wanted to make sure that, um, we're speaking to her capacity as a board member.
And I can appreciate that.
And so when she's on the board, she wouldn't be answering to this type of questioning, that's why.
So if you came up and you're being confirmed as a board member of anything, okay, in this case, it's nursing. But let's say you have a deep dark secret behind, you know, your back shed and you like to kill animals, I would like to know about that, because that's gonna affect how I vote.
We just, again, I just want to make sure that, um, she's answering to her capacity as a board member, so we wouldn't necessarily, um, be talking about. Um, the nurse ratio, we kind of just sticking to licensure on this.
I know what the job is in the board, that's what I'm trying to tell you, I know what the job of what she's being put there is. I'm trying to have a conversation with her, so I can understand some of the things that she thinks about. Whether it pertains to the job or not, because as a human being, that's, uh, my scope of my vote is way above beyond. What she's gonna do on the commission. So I return back. To the question, if I may, Chair. Thank you. What do you think about the discrepancies currently? This is, I think, again, I realize that this is not in the scope of the position. But because you're in front of me and you have a lot of experience as a nurse, I just want to know.
Um, I just find this is not just in healthcare. I, as a citizen of the United States, feel that it is. Something that is a problem across the board for many corporations. Again, I can't speak specifically to. HPH because I have not evaluated those types of salaries. But I think it is a problem in the United States of America across the board, so I will just leave it at that.
That's what I not wanted to know, and so thank you, I am in support of your recommendation.
Thank you, sir, I appreciate it.
Members, any other questions for the nominee? Okay, if not, thank you very much for making yourself available, we'll move on. Uh, the next nominee is Governor's Message seven thirty-one Darren Dunbar for consideration, also to the Board of Nursing for a term to expire June thirty. Twenty twenty-nine. Uh, DCCA in support. Thank you, Madeline Samus in support, Jacob Porter in support, and Diana Motley in support. Excuse me, is there anyone else who would like to testify on this nomination? Okay, thank you, if we, uh, got you late, then we'll check, but if you can help us remember to make sure your testimony is noted for the record. Oh, it is, okay, I don't have it on my list, that's all, we do have you, i- is there anyone else who would like to testify? Members, questions, oh, do we have the nominee online? Oh, in the room, uh, would you like to make a statement? Um, if you can come up and, uh, yeah, for an extended statement, just so that you get caught on the feed online. Yeah, good morning.
Good morning, thank you.
You might start by reintroducing yourself.
Sure, my name is Darren Dunbar, uh, I work as the Senior Director of Nursing Operations at the Queens Medical Center. I'm grateful for the opportunity to be here this morning, for the opportunity to be considered to serve the Hawaii Board of Nursing. Uh, I've been a nurse for thirty-five years and served at the bedside as an advanced practice nurse, as an educator and as a leader. These varied experiences as a nurse inform, um, my interest in, in working with the Hawaii Board of Nursing and giving back in this way. Um, I learned early on the importance of being professionally active, not only at work, um, but in the external aspects of, um, the profession of nursing. I'm a transformational leader dedicated to creative solutions and improvement, and again, thank you for the opportunity to be here and to be considered for this role. Happy to entertain any questions.
Thank you, members, questions? Senator Awah.
Darren, eh, really appreciate that you're here in person, um, um, because these are conversations that, that, you know, I like to have, and so. What I asked, uh, the previous nominee, I, I'd like to get your take on as well, the discrepancy between the executives who. Uh, make millions of dollars while nurses have to continue to fight every year. To get better working conditions and a little more money in their pocket.
Certainly. Um, it's a real conversation, it's also complicated, I think there's a lot of things that go into that in terms of. Um, educational preparation experiences, um, and differences in terms of salary versus hourly wages and. Um, nurses unlike other professionals have opportunities to. Um, modify or augment their income, um, by choice of, you know, many nurses' salaries are based on thirty-six hour work rate, many other professionals work forty hours or so. Um, I don't have. I don't feel prepared to respond to, you know, is somebody making two million versus a nurse making a hundred and seventy thousand? That discrepancy, there's differences.
Or maybe just. Anybody making a more than a million dollars in the healthcare field, do you think that's fair? When, when on our side, you know, we pay medical and some of us can't even afford to go to the doctors. Because of the bill that we get after the insurance doesn't cover all of it.
Understood, um, fair is a tough question, um. I am strongly in favor of nurses being paid, um, wages that are fair, that are, that they deserve to earn for the work that's done at the bedside. Again, I've been a nurse for thirty-five years and have been a- advocated in various ways along the way to do that. Um, I think we have some particular challenges with the cost of living in Hawaii, um, and so understand that. A- as you mentioned, nurses coming back year after year to. Advocate for themselves for these wages, um. I don't know how to. I haven't given thought to how a solution might address this, this issue, um, there is certainly discrepancies. Would be wrong to say otherwise, in terms of the fairness, I don't know that I, I'm prepared to be the arbiter of that, um.
It just seems to me that, you know, when, when the gap is that big, a- and, and there are people making that much money. Yet, others can't afford to go to the doctors, some people can't even afford to do their job, it just seems like, hey. You know, just like Hiko, right, when, when their CEO is making a, almost a million bucks, and everybody's like, hey, why is my bill going up? Can't you guys cut off the top over there? And tha- and that's the concern that I bring to you, and I understand it's a hard position to be in, you, you know, just getting peppered with questions. That, you know, is not really relevant to the role that you're gonna be doing, but because you're here, I wanted to have the conversation. Thank you.
Members, any other questions?
Uh, thank you for. Uh, stepping forward to serve.
Uh, next we have, uh, Governor's Message seven thirty-two Marianne Timmerman. Uh, for consideration to the Board of Dentistry for a term to expire June thirty twenty twenty-nine. Uh, Board of Dentistry in support. Thank you, Jenny Wakefield in support. Okay, is there anyone else who would like to testify? Okay, Ms. Timmerman. Anything beyond standing on your testimony, then we ask you to come so that you can speak into the mic and the feed can catch you for the record.
Okay.
You can start with your name.
My name's Marianne Timmerman, and I would love to serve on the Board of Dentistry again. Um, I feel like I've gained even more experience with, um, you know. Knowing the dental and dental hygiene exam, clinical exams to get licensed. And I feel it's very important, so, um, I just want to be on the board to. You know, help protect the public of our state.
Thank you, members, any questions? Okay, thank you very much. Okay, uh, last nominee on this agenda is Governor's Message seven thirty. Okay, uh, last nominee on this agenda is Governor's Message seven thirty-three for consideration to the State Boxing Commission, Aichi Jumuan, for a term to expire June thirty twenty twenty-nine. Uh, Boxing Commission.
Morning Chair, uh, Member of the Committee Justin Joe Graham, please, for Executive Officer Jameson Skazinski. Um, Chair is down on the first testimony in support of the competition.
Thank you. Uh, Michael Freitas in support. Jacqueline Curita in support. Robin Jumuan in support. Miles Enel in support. Is there anyone else who would like to testify? Okay, Stidjumuan.
I just want to say that I look forward to serving on the uh board uh and as the Chair, uh, sit back on my testimony and hope you consider me.
Thank you. Members, any questions for the nominee? Okay, if not, we'll recess for decision-making. Okay, welcome back. This is decision-making on our first Friday, April eleventh, twenty twenty-five, nine thirty AM agenda in conference room two two nine. These are on on nominees that we've just taken testimony and asked questions of. Uh, if there are no objections by the committee, I'm going to recommend that we take all of the nominees in one motion because after reviewing the testimony, uh, the recommendation is going to be that we advise and consent uh to the nominations of all of the members on the agenda. Uh, any discussion, members?
Discussion.
Senator Awah.
If you could just log down and no vote for GM seven two nine, please. And, um, at the advice of my colleague, the good Senator from Lahaina. Um, if Hawaii Pacific Health, when it comes to their employee give back campaign, can make sure that the executives give back a lot more than the nurses, I would appreciate it.
So noted. Uh, so again, noting the uh opposition from Senator Awah on Governor's Message seven two nine. The recommendation members uh in one vote will be to advise and consent to the following nominees. GM five 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 Michael Nonaka to the Hawaii Hurricane Relief Fund Board of Directors. Governor's Message five nine three Marie White to the Hawaii Hurricane Relief Fund Board of Directors. Governor's Message five nine four Reyna Miyamoto to the Hawaii Hurricane Relief Fund Board of Directors. Governor's Message five nine five Leslie Dorr to the Hawaii Hurricane Relief Fund Board of Directors. Governor's Message five nine seven Edward Hike to the Hawaii Hurricane Relief Fund Board of Directors. Governor's Message seven eight two Gwen McDonald to the Hawaii Hurricane Relief Fund Board of Directors. Uh, Governor's Message five one seven Teresa Hernandez to the Hawaii Board of Chiropractic. Governor's Message seven two nine Terrence Aratani to the Board of Nursing. Governor's Message seven three zero Cheryl Shields Hansen to the Board of Nursing. Governor's Message seven three one Darren Dunbar to the Board of Nursing. Governor's Message seven three two Marion Timmerman to the Board of Dentistry. And Governor's Message seven three three Aichi Jumuan to the Boxing Commission of Hawaii. And the chair goes eye.
Thank you. Uh, the CPM members present, are there any voting with, oh, I'm sorry. Let's see, of the members present, are there any voting in the with objections or reservations?
Just to the one previously noted and I for all the rest.
Okay, thank you. Senator Awah, all others are uh adopted.
Uh, thank you very much. We're adjourned. Okay, we're reconvening for decision-making on this Friday, April eleventh, twenty twenty-five, nine thirty AM uh agenda in conference room two two nine to consider Governor's Message seven four seven Zachary Johnson to the Board of Public Accountancy for a term to expire June thirty twenty twenty-nine. Uh, after reviewing the testimony that's come in after the hearing, the recommendation is to advise and consent to the nomination. Any discussion? Okay, seeing none, passing uh advising and consenting to the nomination. Chair goes eye.
Thank you, Vice Chair, also votes eye, Senator McKelvey.
Oh, yes, sorry, it's hard to hear over here.
Senator Richards.
Aye.
Senator Awah.
Aye.
Thank you. Recommendation is adopted.
Uh, thank you very much. We're adjourned. Okay, reconvening on our final nine thirty AM agenda on Friday, April eleventh, twenty twenty-five, in conference room two two nine at the State Capitol. Uh, the recommendation on uh, the recommendation, uh, if there are no objections, is to take the following nominees uh in one vote and to advise and consent to their nominations after reviewing uh the testimony in a prior hearing. Uh, Governor's Message five sixty-one Tiffany Lynn Hummel to the Hawaii Board of Veterinary Medicine. Uh, Governor's Message five sixty-three Gabriel Asay to the Hawaii Board of Veterinary Medicine. Governor's Message six fifty-eight Brooke Foreman to the Board of Acupuncture. And Governor's Message seven oh six Brian Chen to the Board of Speech Pathology and Audiology. Members, any discussion? Okay, seeing none, Chair goes eye.
Thank you, Vice Chair, also votes eye, Senator McKelvey.
Yes.
Senator Richards.
Aye.
Senator Awah.
Aye.
Recommendations are adopted.
Uh, thank you very much. Thank you for serving. We're adjourned.